I'd like to call to order the Clarkston Independent District Library Board of Trustees Meeting for January 13, 2020. The meeting will be called to order at 6:30 p.m. Let's rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your call, please.
Dan Gaffney, here.
Dan Green.
Here.
Allison McFadden-Kiezel, here. Nancy Moon, there.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Here.
Anne Rose, absent.
Kristi Schulte.
Here.
Julie Meredith.
Okay. Alex Sarah Moleson.
So, who?
I think you have that.
Olivia Jen.
I'm right.
And we have a second?
Yeah. Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as presented. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Call to the public. We have a new liaison tonight.
Okay, Laura Perkins, and I'm the new liaison from the Friends of the Library Board. And I was to have to report on what we did last week, or this week, I guess. Okay, for one thing, we are implementing Logistics, which is a computer database to manage our employee, I mean, our volunteers. We also voted to buy a second bookcase to match the one in the hallway, so that we'll have a more attractive display. And we received a $5,000 check from Bowman Chevrolet to help with our summer reading program.
Okay. Thank you. And that, tonight, will end our call to the public at 6:35. I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
The move and seconded to accept the consent agenda, which contains six items tonight. Any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Next, Julie will present library statistics.
So, that would be a little pile of papers in front of you. They would be the three pages that are on the top. They are the rightly colored ones. One of the things that you'll need to notice, these would be the statistics for the month of December. On that first paper, it says totals of visitors, there's a big zero. Our people counter died.
Oh.
So, we've got nothing tracking for the month of December, so it's not that we did not have plenty of people here.
Well, I could say that I came here.
As did I, so.
Yes, so we are in the process of buying a new people counter and getting anyone installed, so unfortunately, we were hoping it was a battery issue. It is not, so.
Well, it's been a duty for quite some time.
It has been a credit for a number of years. In addition, you also have some statistics. There are listed volunteer hours. These come from Adrian Colombo, who's our Community Relations Volunteer Coordinator. She started with us in April and started tracking our volunteers in June. So, this report goes from June until the end of the year. Now, this does not include all of the Friends of the Library book sale and all of that. She's doing the volunteers that are specifically working on library-type things. And there were a total of 318 and a half hours. She's got a nice little breakdown here of what all they do while they're here. So, we've got an adult services programming assistant. We have ones that help cleaning crews. Those are people that are cleaning books. We have summer reading program registration assistant, youth services program assistant, and youth services program prep. So, those are the people that, you know, cut out little things for summer reading or for storytime and things like that. So, those are all lovely, to have that kind of help. In terms of valuation, she's using what is considered a volunteer standardized valuation, which would be a value of $8,099.46.
Wow.
Really nice, yes. So, thank you, Adrian, for working on it.
Is that based on IRS numbers?
You know, I'm not really sure. I think she's using something that is considered standard for volunteer nonprofit work. She used to work for the Detroit Zoo.
Okay.
And that was the way that they were tracking it. So, she's using whatever that is. I can double-check anything.
I'm just curious, to make sure that the IRS is something.
I don't think it's IRS. Yeah. I think it's a nonprofit thing that is doing it.
Just curious.
Not that we can reinvent the wheel.
Also, this isn't really part of the director's report. It's a little bit more of statistics, but there is an annual report from the marketing team, which would be Adrian and Trevor, our business and marketing librarian. So, they wanted to point out that in terms of building improvements, we unveiled the Business Center this year. The computer room, which would be this room, transitioned into the conference room. They've done a full load of improved signage, wayfinding, both indoors and outdoors. In terms of events and community connections, they've been working on the Ask Your Representative collaboration with ITV. Of course, we ran the Fourth of July parade, which is something we do every year. We attended over 100 external events and meetings representing the library. The Clarkston Area Chamber of Commerce events are now hosted regularly here at CIDL, the Young Professionals Network, and the new member orientation. So, monthly and bi-monthly meetings that are part of the chamber are coming here, which is really nice. Community Impact Weekend, Adrian is on the planning committee, and we have heard the event participation. So, in the spring, our project is the book sale, and in the fall, we do letter writing. So, last year, we did letter writing to our first responders, our police and fire, and this year, we did letter writing to homebound. So, they just send home on the Meals on Wheels program. In terms of reaching new audiences, we did a new library card signup promotion in September. We've been doing new homeowner outreach letters each month. We've updated the CIDL flyer included in Township Welcome Packet, record-breaking summer reading registrations with over 1,000 individuals, increasing visibility. We had the Vote for the Best, the Number One Library Campaign and Celebration, increased social media presence, including Facebook Live videos, and improved constant contact usage with regular open rates of 30% to 50%. So, these are all things from Adrian and Trevor.
That's nice.
Isn't that lovely? Of course, from the marketing department.
Yeah.
We can now start a notebook.
Yes, exactly.
It's good to know what their partnership is.
Yeah, it's very nice.
It is. They've done a lot this year, working together, they made a good team, so.
Excellent.
Yes.
Now, for our library director's report.
So, in terms of general information, on Sunday, January 12, 2020, so that would be yesterday, the two morning full-time employees came in at 11 instead of 10 to assure that there was time for the snowplow contractors to fully treat ice in the parking lot. We don't open until 1:00, so it didn't really affect public service or anything like that, but I just thought I'd let you know that we did do that Saturday. Ended up not being as icy as we anticipated, but we were on the lookout for that all day, and we fared pretty well, actually. For project updates, at their meeting on December 17, the Township Board appointed, as you all know, Jan Gaffney, Daniel Green, Allison McFadden-Kiezel, Marilyn Pomeroy, and Kristi Schulte, the Library Board, to fill their five positions for the term beginning on January 1, 2020. I want to make sure that ended up in the notes, because last month, we didn't really know for sure what the Township was going to do, because your meeting was before their meeting. Next item, the library's attorney sent me the draft of a fund balance policy and fund balance resolution, which is something that I've been working with her on for the last few months. The drafts have been reviewed by the Library Board Treasurer and Director, so we anticipate these going onto the February meeting agenda for Library Board review. Next item, the question came up regarding whether it is possible to participate in Library Board meetings remotely. We do not currently have a policy regarding this possibility, so I contacted our attorney. Recently, the law changed, and there is now a requirement to provide remote participation for anyone serving the military, and other reasons can be included in that policy. So, I'm currently working with our attorney to draft a policy that the Board can review. We anticipate this policy being on the agenda in the February meeting as well. Next item, the library's 2020 budget includes the creation and implementation of a new strategic plan. We would like the Library Board to have representation on the Strategic Planning Committee, so we hope that this project will be of interest to someone on the Board. So, I'll leave me to decide who you might want to have do that at some point. Next item, in the creation of the library's budget, each year, the Library Board's Staffing Subcommittee works with me on organizational structure, wages, benefits, et cetera. During last year's budget workshop, it was suggested it might also be helpful to have a capital improvement plan subcommittee to work with me on prioritizing building projects. Budget subcommittees usually meet once or twice in the spring to review where we are now, what ideas are out there in terms of necessary and discretionary costs, and assist in the discussion that leads to the budget draft that is reviewed at the budget workshop in July or August. If the Board would like to initiate a CAP subcommittee, it would be something that could be cited in the next few months. Next, we have been working on updating and adding some signs throughout the building, as was in the lovely marketing report. New signs that have recently been added include labels for the information desk and the new conference room, which hopefully helped people find this room tonight. We also discovered that our sign in the library's driveway has developed cracks. This sign is shared with the Clarkston Community Historical Society, so we talked to them about it, and they would like to do some sort of update. This sign was installed in 2005 with an update of the plastic inserts in 2013. Unfortunately, we did not notice the wear on this until after the budget was approved, so this is not a budgeted item in 2020. In order to proceed with this item, we will need to bring a proposal to the Board for consideration in the coming months, but we'll work that out with Historical Society first and figure out costs. It's fun to let you know that's on the horizon. And last, but not least, the library houses the Community Information Network, known as the CIN website, a grant project from the early 1990s in which Susan and Bill Basinger created an online resource of information about the historic homes in Clarkston's historic district. Over the past two years, the library has been working with local web company, IGD Solutions, to turn this site into a database and update the platform for new technologies. The Clarkston Historic District Commission is beginning to work on a project to review and update guidelines and information on the homes in historic districts. I was asked if the library could assist in this project. Our participation would be twofold. We will continue our work updating the CIN website, and we will have assigned a librarian to help the commission's study group with their research to assure that all of the new information that is gathered is included in the database that we've been working on. So, that's something that we have done putting together and working on in terms of supporting that archiving of that information.
Excellent. Anything else? Nope, that's good. All right, we will now move to our regular business, and the first item of regular business is to elect the Board President, Vice President, Secretary, and Treasurer for this working year. So, at the moment, we have two people who have stepped down, so we are going to ask for nominations for each of the positions at this time. So, I will accept a motion for appointment as President.
I nominate Marilyn Pomeroy as President.
Are there any other nominations for this position? If not, I'll accept a nomination for appointment as Vice President.
I nominate Dan Green.
I second.
Any other nominations for this position? If not, we'll accept a nomination for appointment as Treasurer.
I nominate Jan Gaffney.
Second.
Any other nominations for that position? And finally, nomination for Secretary.
I nominate Allison McFadden-Kiezel.
I second.
Any other position, any other nominations for that position? All right, so we now have a slate that includes Marilyn Pomeroy, Dan Green, Jan Gaffney, and Allison McFadden-Kiezel as our Board. I'll accept a motion for approval.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
Okay. And, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we elect this slate of officers. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The Board is selected for the year. Thank you, everybody. Second, it's the first of the year, so it's time for us to review Board duties and responsibilities, things that we should know as a Board. And actually, the Board likes to do this at the beginning of each year, to just refresh for those of us who've been on, and as an informational item for those who are joining So, Julie, if you've got materials you would like to...
I have.
While she's getting them out, let me make...
I wish I got it in.
Let me refer back to the library director's report. It's been the policy of the Board since we were first inaugurated, that Board members serve in various capacities in the library, so that someone on the Board is generally knowledgeable about things that are going on. So, someone sits on staffing, someone sits in on interviews, someone works on budgeting. So, we have various ones. So, you notice, we have three possible new ones that are underlined here in the director's report. So, what we like to do is have people work in capacities and stay comfortable and interested. So, as you underline the Strategic Planning Committee, the Staffing Subcommittee, the Capital Improvement Plan Committee, think of these areas, and if there's anything that sounds interesting, we like to have a Board member on each of the committees. And that way, someone on the Board is knowledgeable about what's going on, we have additional information.
Are we doing that now?
No, not necessarily. You got something in mind?
No, I just want to continue on the staffing Subcommittee.
I would, too.
Okay, so you notice that these two tend to be on the Staffing Subcommittee.
We've been at it for a while.
Yeah. And I enjoy being on the hiring end of things, so that's fine.
Well, I've been on the Staffing Subcommittee also, and I would be happy to continue with that.
Yeah. Also, we have Evaluation Subcommittee, too, and I don't know if people want... So, we will, I think when we get to the time when we're going to discuss, we usually do evaluations later in the year, and at that time, the Board works on a self-evaluation, and we also evaluate the library director. So, keep that in mind.
I do have a question about the strategic planning. What's the time commitment on that? Because I would love to do that, but I need to...
It's going to be really hard for me to say this early in the game.
We're not ready for that yet.
No, no, it's going to depend a lot on how the committee wants to go forth and what we decide to do, so.
I would be interested.
Okay. I'll try to have that set up so that we've got a better, I can give you a better idea of what that time commitment will look like. I'll make a note to do that.
Does that include ideas and building, or it could be anything?
Yeah.
So, it's just, the staff at the library is very active. Julie's very much of a consensus builder and collaborative. If it's going to affect you, you should have a say in some of the decision-making, and so she's very inclusive. And so, and we like the staff to know that we're interested also.
We're not just sitting here once a month with rubber stamping. We like to be involved in all that's going on. I'd be interested in capital improvement and strategic planning, if you need two people.
Okay.
You just can't have four.
If you have four, it qualifies as an open meeting.
That's right. I can't have two.
We'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. I'm ready. Are you ready for me to go ahead?
Okay.
All right. So, first and foremost, I've got a little PowerPoint up here, and I've got a whole pile of paper, and I'll kind of include these pieces as we go. Everybody see okay? First off, welcome to the Library Board. The first thing that we're going to do is, we're going to talk about how things work behind the scenes. So, first and foremost, I'd like to talk a little bit about how we share information with the public. We have, the main way that we do that is on our website. So, we do have a Library Board website. If you go on to, I'll show you. If you go on to our main website.
That's very up-to-date.
Yes. No, that was not us. Sorry. There we go. So, if you go to our main website, and you go under the About tab, you can see that we do have the Library Board under the About tab. And when you click on that, we do have pictures of our Board members. So, I have two new Board members who currently don't have little photos on there, that we will, we will get photos of you and add you in, and we will make changes to the officers now that we've got voted on, officers. And then we have our Library Board meetings. And then the other important piece that we have down here at the bottom, we have direct links to the library's bylaws. There is a PDF of the Board meetings. And most importantly, is this little link right here that says agendas, minutes, packets, and archived meetings. And if you click on that, we actually have something that's called Documents on Demand. This is something that the Township uses, as well as the library. And you can see off to the side here, we have agendas, minutes, agenda packets, audits, videos, budgets, and all of the history of the District Library establishment, and how we did that in the District Library Agreement. So, for example, if a patron were interested in what was going on, there's our agendas, all of our agendas from 2012 to 2020. We established in 2012. You can go in and you can see all the minutes. You can go in and see the agenda packets, including the one for tonight. And we post those on the Friday before the meeting, so all of that information is on there. We do post all of our audits. We are videotaping this evening's meetings, and we have all of the videos, recordings of the meetings. And then budgets. The interesting thing about the budgets is that we archive back. So, the Board approves a budget in September of the year preceding that year, so the budget for 2019 was approved in September of 2018. And these are all of the times that the Library Board amended the budget throughout the year, any small amendments that we make, move a little bit of money from one account to another, and that sort of thing. That's all archived, so that people can see from one month to the next when those changes occurred. Any questions about any of that?
We're very in favor of transparency.
Yes. So, the nice thing about that is that it does allow us, oops, don't do that. The nice thing about having everything so clearly on the website is that, when people ask if there's a FOIA request, for example, most of the information is already out there. It makes it very quick for them, so we don't get a lot of Freedom of Information Act, FOIA requests. Talk a little bit more about that in a little bit. Okay, so getting to know more about the Board meetings themselves, Library Board meetings are once a month on Monday at 6:30 p.m. They used to be at 6:00, now they're at 6:30. Meetings are televised and archived on the website, as we just discussed. Meeting packets are emailed to Board members, printed and placed in Board member mailboxes, and posted to the website the Friday before the meeting. Within the packet, each agenda item starts with a meeting agenda item form, which we in the building call a MAF, that summarizes history, context, and recommendations about that item. So, whenever myself or somebody on staff does an agenda item, they have to fill out that MAF to put with other things that goes in the board packet. So, you'll be able to see that in your packet, and it helps you as you're going through the packet. The MAF is then followed by any important supporting documentation.
Yes.
Board members also receive a working agenda with their packet that indicates which items need a vote, details that should be included in the motion, and the type of vote needed, standard or roll call. So, what happens with the working agenda is that I am the Library Board's employee. If there's something in the board packet that I am not sure whether it needs a standard or a roll call vote, I call the attorney on your behalf, find out, put it in the working agenda, keeps your meeting running smoothly. That way, you know whether or not you need a roll call, or whether or not you need a standard vote, whatever is needed. I can do all of that in advance and helps the meeting run nicely for you. Whenever possible, meeting handouts are included in the minutes, unless they are documents that cannot be publicly posted, such as material subject to copyright laws or privileged legal communications from the library's attorney. Now, tonight, I have an example of something that would not be put in because of copyright in your little pile of handouts in front of you. There's quite a lot of handouts, so I know that. There is an article called "Ten Ways to Avoid Violating the Open Meetings Act." This was written by our attorney. She gave me permission to give each of you a reader's copy, but she did not give me permission to publicly post this anywhere. So, the Library Board will be getting a copy of this, but it will not go into the minutes because that, by putting it on our website, would be publishing it outside of, it would be a violation of copyright. So, you've got this article that you can read, but the public may actually get to see that article.
It's always good to have an example.
It is, it is. I have a feeling people might be wondering what would be constituted by a copyright violation, and it's if I've gotten permission to give each of you something, but I don't have permission to give 35,000 residents or the World Wide Web that information. Okay, so the next thing is, our attorney did give you a nice little packet of orientation material, and I'm going to do the sort of brief highlighted version of that packet of material. That was also in your packet. The full version is not in the packet, but the upbraider that I was talking about. In terms of library, in terms of responsibilities, the Library Board is the governing body of the library, who are the policymakers. The Library Board's official spokesperson is the president. The Library Board is subject to the Open Meetings Act. Any gathering of four or more Board members is a quorum and should be posted in advance and open to the public. Committees and subcommittees with fewer than four Board members in attendance and have no decision-making authority are not subject to the Open Meetings Act. That's your subcommittees that we were just talking about. So, that includes the Staffing Subcommittee, and that includes the CAP Subcommittee, the Evaluations Subcommittee. The Library Board should not send emails to the entire group, because group discussions via email could be construed as a meeting. If I send an email to the entire Board, I will send it blank copy email, so if you reply to that message, it will only go to me, and that will prevent the danger of impropriety. So, for example, if I send out your board packet, and I will say, hey, so we have a meeting on Monday night, it's at 6:30, this is your board packet, I always include in there, please let me know if you're going to be unable to attend, so I can make a quorum. So, let's say, in this case, Anne emailed me back and said, am I going to be able to make it to the meeting? I would then, I could then email the whole Board and say, hey, just does an update, Anne's not going to be able to make it to the meeting, so if anybody else can't make it, we're down one person. If she had replied to all, then that would be considered a meeting. So, if there's anything that comes back to me, I will make sure it goes back out to the Board in a way that's appropriate, but it makes sure that we don't accidentally get into a conversation that we shouldn't be doing, you know, because that would be like a private meeting. The administrative assistants and the library director will ensure that meetings and minutes are posted according to the guidelines. In terms of the Freedom of Information Act, the library director is the FOIA coordinator. So, just a few months ago, we approved and updated FOIA policy. Our FOIA policy is on our library website. I want to tell you right out of the gate, it's huge, so if you want something to solve some sort of insomnia problem...
And all FOIA policies are.
I suggest you read our FOIA policy. But if you go into, I'll just drop it right here. Oh, there it is. Library Policies. And there is the FOIA tab right there. So, it's under Library Policies, About, and then Library Policies. We have the full FOIA policy and procedure, and then there, it is required by law that there is a summary version that's a little bit easier for reading purposes, and that 's how it reflects the public record and other FOIA information, so all of that is on the website. If there is a FOIA request that identifies me as the person that receives that information, and I handle that on the library's behalf. And then, another thing to be aware of is the Michigan Library Privacy Act. Library records, that's, say, contact information, list of materials that are checked out, et cetera, are considered confidential and require a court order for release. So, we are very particular about who handles our database of information. The Integrated Library System, known as an ILS, is the software that we use in order to manage the comings and goings of materials. And I like to explain it as its two parts. It is a database of absolutely everything the library owns. It's a huge catalog. And then it is also a database of everybody who has a library card. And so, when you come into the library with your library card and you check something out, this lovely piece of software says, hey, this person has this material, and it is due on this date. All of that is confidential. We do not share that with anybody, and the law states that we do not share that with anybody. If somebody were to want that, they would need a court order in order to get it. So, that's just the Michigan Library Privacy Act protecting your privacy.
And there's no record kept of what anyone has checked out?
Once you have returned an item, it is deleted from the system. The only caveat to that is, you are able to turn on a reading history. The patron has to do that. We cannot do that on their behalf. And it will let them know that if we have the information and there's a court order, we do have to turn it over. So, that's one of the ways that we protect your privacy, is when you return things... So that's one of the ways that we protect your privacy is when you return things, as long as there's no filing or fee catch, should everything disappears off of your record. And so we can't give up information that we don't have. There's no reason for us to archive that for posterity, so we don't. Could make for a lot of space needed on our server to store it all anyway. So in terms of the board project calendar, there are some things that are sort of board-driven projects that do cap in. The first thing we do in January, we elect officers. I'm taking care of that, I'll set up the to-do list. We're very accomplished now. In March and April, we do our annual audit. The library pretty much handles the audit, but you will get an audit report that usually takes place in June or July, depending on what works with the library boards in general. There, during the audit process, they do, the auditor will contact two library board members to ask some additional questions about how things are run and make sure that everything is being done appropriately and ethically and that sort of thing. So just so you know, that usually happens in March or April. In March through June, the staffing subcommittee and now a capital improvement plan subcommittee will meet. There's usually one or two meetings of those groups. And what they're doing is they are assisting with the creation of the draft budget. So the staffing subcommittee works on wages and benefits and that sort of thing. The capital improvement plan subcommittee will help prioritize things to be done to the building act. The building is almost 30 years old, so there's lots, just like a house, there's lots to be done. I have a very, very large spreadsheet of absolutely everything that is tied to this building, all of the heating and the cooling and the tables and the chairs and all of that kind of thing. And when it was purchased or installed, and its expected life expectancy. Yep. And then at the, at the last of it, there's a little column of priorities. I give it a one, two, or a three. If it's a three, we're all good. If it's a one, we should be thinking about how we're going to fund the replacement of that. So when the capital improvement plan subcommittee meets, we would be looking at that more closely and prioritizing those things. Playing with it. In July or August, the board holds an annual budget workshop. That's when the board gets together in a small room like this, we roll up our sleeves and we go over the entire draft of the budget for the coming year, ask all of our questions, clarify all of the answers, make any changes. And then in August or September, the board holds public hearings on the militaries and the budget and approves the budget. So we are done planning the budget in September for the following year. Even though our fiscal year is January to December, we get done in September, cross out the to-do list, and finish up the year strong, and then start in January with a brand-new fresh budget that has been already put to bed a few months already. In September to December, we change gears and we do performance reviews. So the library's department heads do performance reviews for all of the library staff. And then the library board does my performance review and then a self-review of the report itself. So from September to December, we're all looking at reviewing. And then from October to February, the library's annual state aid report is filed. And that sounds like a really long window, but really what happens is our fiscal year is January to December, the state's fiscal year is October to September. So the state runs their, it would make sense if we run the same fiscal year as the state, that in October, they would be gathering all of the data from the previous year. But since we are on a January to December, in October, they say, hey, we want your last year's statistics. So it's January, I'm gathering all of the 2019 statistics and I'm putting them in a folder because the state's not going to ask me for them until October. But that's great because it gives me a lot of time to gather all that up, make sure I have all of the appropriate details. It's a 12-page report, it's lots and lots of really exciting information. Another opportunity for insomnia here. But anyway, we do that, and then usually between October and December is when I file that report. And then in January, we start all over again, asking the staff to help me gather all of that data. Any questions about any of that? And if all goes really, really smoothly, you see the report for the previous year. So we looked at 2018's data in December of 2019. That's just kind of the way it works. It's silly, but that's how it works. Okay. So the next thing we're going to talk about is the organizational structure. So in terms of organizational structure, the library board, as we said, are the policymakers and the governing body. The library board is responsible for hiring a director. I am, at this point, your director. And then all of the library employees report to me. And this is the structure by which they report to me. So we have, on the first level, you see a number of department heads. You see, yep. You see a number of department heads, then you see the, the full-time employees that are at department heads, and then we have all of our part-timers underneath that. Any questions about that?
We just wrote this new sheet.
There was a, okay. I know, sorry. I tried to keep, oh, there's a lot of paper tonight. It's okay, that's okay.
We got it.
So when it comes to full-time employees, we do currently have 11 full-time employees. As was approved in the 2020 budget, we are adding a 12th employee, and we will be doing that in the spring. When we hire full-time employees, the library board approves, first of all, you approve the posting. I can't post for a full-time employee until the board says yay. And then when we have gone through the selection process and we have a recommendation to make, the library board also approves the person that we have selected. Part-time employees, I have the ability to hire those people on my own, as long as they stay within budget. But the staffing committee and the board see what that list looks like, and we, and we have a certain number of positions. So if I were thinking that I were going to make additional positions, you would know about that during the staffing committee process and during the approval of the budget. But if I have a part-timer, I'm not going to come to you every time a Shelver quits to go work at another restaurant or some other library or whatever. I will go ahead and replace those people with low drama, because they do come and go. Sometimes the part, the full-timers come and go, but lately we've been doing really good. And I would keep those things moving. Any questions about the comings and goings of employees and organizational structure? It will all make more sense as we go through the year, I'm sure. All right. So the next thing is the budget. And theoretically, if you just turn the page, you should be, there we go. Okay, good. Sorry for making so much stirring your fingers. Okay. So when we're, when we're looking at the budget, I actually sort of divide the budget in my head into two parts. The top half is our staffing budget. It is most common for a library's staffing costs to be between 50% and 65% of the total operating budget for the year. We do try to keep it at 60%. That assists us if we ever have a situation where something changes mid-year, so that we've got a cushion, so that we're not shooting way past what we consider to be an appropriate top-end level. And it also gives me a lot of guidance when I'm trying to figure out what I want to do in the coming year, in terms of wages and benefits and that sort of thing. The other half of the budget, which is sort of this middle section right here, that's our operating budget. So that's everything that has to do with collections, that has to do with heating and cooling, and just the running of the building in general, keeping the building up in good repair, and that sort of thing. And I have a number of people on staff that help me with the various pieces of this budget. For example, our lead custodian is in charge of line 931, which is our Building San Fronz budget. She and I work very closely on it, but she does a lot of the monitoring herself and we work on that together. So for example, that 931 budget would include lawn mowing and snow plowing, repairs. We have rugs that are in front of the circulation desk that are rental that get cleaned every month. That's all included in that 931 budget. Does that all make sense? And so she kind of oversees that and I oversee what she's, she's looking at. Okay. The bottom little piece of the budget down here, that's our revenues section. So that's how we get to the number that we have. So if you look at 2020, under the revenue line, you can see that our millage will bring in just over $2 million. The next thing that's listed is the CIA capture, the corridor improvement authority tax capture. That's set at zero because the library board has opted the library out of that. But I leave it on there because we're still, this budget still includes us being able to see 2018 and 2018 there with a tax catch. So I haven't deleted it completely. We won't see that going forward in the next budget year. State aid, that's, I talked, referred to a little bit ago about that state aid report. That's the information that we send to the state, and in return, we do get some money back from the state that helps support the library. When we do the, the estimates for how much that money is, that is actually a very lowball estimate because our state aid money comes in in two pieces. And sometimes if the state gets tight on money, they sometimes threaten not to give us the other half. So I'm very careful about budgeting in conservatively to assure that if they were to gain that money, we wouldn't be making cuts mid-year. That if the money does come, great, we can afford to do some additional things that we haven't been able to do. That also helps if not all our millage gets collected, you know, some taxes don't get collected and that kind of thing. So this keeps us from shooting over our budget at the end of the year if I, if I do it conservatively. Penal fines. Penal fines is an interesting thing that most people don't know about. Penal fines is a portion of court costs and traffic tickets and that sort of thing. It's written into Michigan's constitution, and so that libraries do get a little piece of that. And what happens is the county keeps track of everything, and there is a very complicated algorithm that figures out who gets what and how much. And we get a piece per resident in our service population. So our total service population is 35,563, and our state aid money is usually about maybe a dollar 39 or something along that, times 35,563, maybe that is one big check. This is another one that I also, when I'm estimating it for budgeting purposes, I estimate it a little bit low because we don't know how many people are going to get speeding tickets. We don't know how many police officers are going to issue speeding tickets. We don't know how many people are going to pay their court costs, we just really don't know. So what we do is we look at the trends, historically speaking, and kind of very conservatively raise and lower it with trends. It has been as high as $75,000, it has been as low as $40,000 in my almost 14 years here. So we just don't know. But it has been trending up in the $70,000 range the last few years, so we're in pretty shape with that. But I always budget it a little bit low because we just don't know.
Hope people are trying properly.
Yep. Fines and fees is exactly what it sounds like. It's, it is library fines and fees for room rentals and that sort of thing. Duplicating and photocopying, that's exactly what that sounds like. People who make photocopies at our copy machine or printouts on our printers, that's the money we collect for that. Interest is the money on our investments. We do our investing very conservatively. We do have some interest-bearing accounts, and so that brings in about, actually probably, I would say brings in closer to $12,000 to $13,000, but you never know how that's going to go either, so I always estimate that a little bit low. And then the last thing that you see on there is E-rate. E-rate is federal money that comes in that helps us pay for our broadband internet. It's like a grant from the federal government. And it is to help us assure that our community has good access to internet. So the amount of money that we get is based on the number of children in the school district that are eligible for the free lunch program. And then there's a special formula, they multiply it out, and we get somewhere between $3,000 and $5,000 a year. Okay. We have sometimes in the past done some transfer from fund balance. We never do that at the beginning of the year, but we have in the past decided to do some additional projects. We have a nice healthy fund balance. As was alluded to in my director's report, the fund balance should have a policy as to what we keep in check for the purpose of running the library in an emergency. You know, your suggests usually three to five or six months of your annual operating costs to keep in fund balance. We have seen it more than that, but the reason that we do is because it is money set aside because our building is 30 years old, and we would like to do some renovations on the building, and definitely do some repairs and things like that. So what has been recommended by our auditor is that we set aside a percentage of fund balance that is the emergency fund, and then designate the rest of it through board resolution for the purpose of those renovations and repairs on the building, and designate it as having a purpose. Because it does, it's not a big chunk of money sitting there with no purpose. We could potentially decide to expand the building or something along those lines. So if we wanted to do those kinds of things, that money would be for, and the board should vote and officially designate it as such. So that's what the attorney is helping us do, is write, write out that information, write out those policies and that for the next month.
And you don't, and you don't want to just leave it without a designation, but it's also nice to, if you have a healthy fund balance, that's a good time to plan for those kinds of things. So you don't have to do a bond issue and borrow money to be paid back by the taxpayers. If we've got the money, then that's.
That's what it would be for. Absolutely.
That's why you're traditional.
Thank you. Okay. So then the last thing that you have, there's resources, and these are part of the handouts that were inside of you when you sat down. So the first resource that I would have you consider is the Library of Michigan, which is www.michigan.gov/librarytrustee. Library of Michigan does great resources on their website. There are two things that they do that are most helpful. The first one is the Michigan Public Library Trustee Manual. That is something that is available online. We also have trustee manuals in the building. The American Library Association also has ones that have been published. I think all of you have seen those at some point. Whenever somebody's interested in meeting the library board, I always recommend that you check out one of those books and take a look at it so that you can see. But the Library of Michigan also publishes one. The other thing that has been recently updated is the Public Library Financial Management Guide. The Library of Michigan does have that created on their behalf. They had Yo and Yo, which is a local accounting and auditing firm, create that for them. They contract them to do that. Alan Panter, who was, is from Yo and Yo, was very instrumental in working on the newest updated edition. He came to the December board meeting and presented each library board member with a copy of that. So I gave Chris and Nancy each a copy. After that, I think we're not on the library board when that happened. So you do have that as well. One of your handouts that you have in your packet, this is another Library of Michigan thing. This is United for Libraries. United for Libraries is a great organization that does a lot to support libraries and advocacy for libraries. When we have our millage that did not pass in 2012, United for Libraries paid for us to have a consultant come and assist us with our 2014 millage campaign, and really educate us on the best way to make sure that the public knew what was in that millage and why it was important. So United for Libraries has a Tools and Resources for Trustees Guide, and it's really nice because the state of Michigan does pay for all library board members to have access to that. So this, and the reason this isn't in the board packet is because this is obviously for library board trustees only. There's a login and a password that is paid for the state of Michigan, and that's this handout. So if you go to this website and click on statewide group members, trustee training, and put in this login and password that they have provided to you, you will be able to get to some really neat things. There are some little 10-minute videos, there's 10 of them, about what's the important things to know about being a library board member. There's one on hiring a director, there's one on staffing, on finance, just neat little 10-minute snippets that are great to give you an overview. And there are also links to PDF resources that can be printed. If you need any of those, feel free to let me know, and I'd be happy to print them on your behalf of the library because that's all part of being a library member. And then last but not least, there is a lovely article, 10 Ways to Avoid Violating the Open Meetings Act. Ryan Ann Surratt, who is our attorney, it is in her best interest that we don't do anything we're not supposed to do. So she made sure that you can have access to that as well, gave me permission to print you a copy, so that you may read through that. It's, it's quick and easy. We do review it on, review it on from time to time to make sure that I haven't forgotten anything.
It's so easy to get into the habit of like the email thing. You know, I've seen that happen so many times where you respond to a group email by responding to everybody. As soon as you do that, if you're talking about anything that might later be voted on, then you're going to violate the Open Meetings Act because you're conducting discussion or discussion.
We are very, very careful about that. I also have included in your handout a copy of our bylaws, which as I mentioned earlier, are available on our site. So any questions, comments? Sorry, surprise me.
It's homework.
It's homework, yes. There's. There's tons of information there. Obviously, there's going to be quite a lot that you already know, and there are other things that you may or may not know. If you have questions, I may have to back and call. Feel free to let me know if you have any...
I really like this thing from the United for Libraries, because that's something that I always think that we need more of, is trustee education.
Yes. And it's really neat, and they're really quick and easy. I do know that some library boards decide, have decided to take a year and 10 minutes before their meeting, they sit down and watch one of those videos. Now, I can't put it as part of the meeting, because if I put it as part of the meeting, then I'm televising something that has copyright attached to it. But we can sit quietly and watch it, and then you can discuss it after the meeting becomes open session. But I can't, but because we record our meetings, can't televise that piece.
Yeah, right.
So we could watch it prior to the meeting.
So we may decide that that would be...
Yeah, that's, you know... So you could decide to do something like that, or you could go in and look at it, and if there are ones that you feel like you wanted to watch on your own and then discuss the meeting, you can do that. But some library boards have been doing that. It's just an opportunity to... Or if there's one that somebody goes through and watches and says, wow, this is really good, I'd...
I'd recommend you take a look at this one.
Yep, so feel free to do that. I'm open to... This is your meeting, so I can just put it all together for you and make sure it happens. Last but certainly not least, we try really hard as a staff, because you are noncompensated, to make sure that your meetings are efficient and that we use your time respectfully. So please, if there's anything that you would like to see done differently, feel free to let me know that.
You do an exceptional job.
I'm not kidding.
It was very smooth.
We try to keep it as, we try to, obviously, in the director's report, you'll see over the course of time that I try to keep you up to date on all the little things that are going on, and that way when it does show up on your board meeting agenda, you've already talked about it a few times, or you've heard me talk about it several times, so it does help the meetings come up or something.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
No, good job.
Thank you. That's good. It's excellent to review, and those of us who've been on the board, we appreciate the review also, so...
It is a lot of information for new board members, but it all starts to make sense as we go through things.
It only takes a few meetings before you're into the rhythm of it and...
And Julie does try very hard to spread out things we have to deal with. So even though we received information on policy, we may not discuss it until next month because it fits better into the agenda.
And if there is, if there is a lot on your agenda, and I said, oh, we're going to put it on the February agenda, and a bunch of things come up that I did not realize were going to come up, I will push it back, because policies can wait and things that are more timely. So I try to space things out to sure that you don't end up, one meeting that's three hours and another meeting that's 15 minutes.
Thank you.
Especially for the not having a three-hour meeting. Nobody wants a three-hour meeting.
Thank you. And that's a good thing for all of us to review, and I will now accept a motion for adjournment.